Welcome, everyone. Call the meeting to order. Lamoore City Council Meeting for May 15th, 2018. At this time, let's stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. Ready salute.
Let the Pledge of Allegiance be the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please remain standing for the invocation by Pastor Sergio Cononis. You're here, sir? I guess not. John, would you please lead us in the invocation?
Dearly Father, Lord, we come before you. We thank you for an opportunity to assemble for the freedom that we have as a country, Lord, that we can come together. And we thank you for the leadership in this community and just pray that your hand be upon them and give them wisdom as they guide the citizens of this community. Lord, thank you for each person who makes up this community and what they contribute to it and just how you have knitted together and created a very special place, Lord. And just pray you'd be with each individual and bless them and just continue to be with our officers that guard and protect our freedoms here in Lamoore. Just watch over them and let them do their duty and keep them in your care. And again, thank you for this evening, in your name we pray. Amen.
Amen. Thank you. Please be seated. Madam Clerk, will you please call the roll?
Councilmember Blair.
Present.
Councilmember Brown.
Here.
Councilmember Chedister.
Here.
Mayor Pro Temneal.
Here.
Mayor Madrigal.
Here. Okay, we have established quorum and we can do the city's business today. So at this time, have, is there any requests to add or approve or delete anything from the agenda? I think we do have one item.
Yes. Item number five dash one, the agreement with Lamoore Volunteer Firefighter Association Incorporated for ancillary services. Contract was sent out. The Lamoore Volunteer Fire Department Association is reviewing it with their legal counsel and we're not ready to bring that forth, so I'd ask to have that removed tonight.
Okay, do we have a motion to remove that item from the agenda today?
I'll make a motion to remove item five one.
All right, so there's a motion by Mr. Chedister's. There's a second. And a second by Mr. Neal. Mr. Chedister.
Aye.
Mr. Neal.
Aye.
Mr. Brown.
Aye.
Ms. Blair.
Aye.
And I vote aye as well, so that item will be removed from the agenda and we'll bring it back at a later time. Thank you. Yes, and we just came back from closed session. We had three items, but there's nothing to report from closed session at this time. So we're going to move to public comment. I do have a few cards here. This is a time when people, anyone from, could come up and speak on any matter that is not on the agenda. I would just let everyone know that we would like to keep our comments to three minutes if possible. So I have, Dr. Kristen Clark is here for public comment.
Good evening. Thank you. I'm Kristen Clark. I'm president at West Hills College, Lamoore, and I'm here tonight on behalf of the faculty, the staff, and the students from West Hills College, Lamoore. As you're most likely aware, last Tuesday, the West Hills College, Lamoore campus was put on lockdown, which includes, in addition to our campus, the Lamoore Middle College High School, the University Charter School, and two child development centers. We were on lockdown for two hours on May 8th after dispatch received a call of a shooter at the high school. The Lamoore Police Department responded in less than two minutes, and that was after being rerouted from Lamoore High School to my campus. We would like to thank the brave men and women's, excuse me, brave men and women of the Lamoore Police Department for their heroism, their very quick response. I think it's pretty impressive that they were able to be on our campus within two minutes. They not only were quick in their response, they were professional, and they had a genuine concern for the safety of our students and our staff. We live in uncertain times, and it certainly feels very good to know that we have such a quick response from our public safety and our local fire department. And I would also like to thank our assigned officer, Officer Stephen McPherson, who called me on the way while driving in route to the college. So I was able to lock down the campus within 30 seconds as a result of his quick response. So I'd like to just publicly thank the entire department. Thank you.
Thank you. Dr. Clark, I would also like to thank you as well, because I did speak to some people from your, on your staff, and it sounds like your protocols and practices that you guys have put in place were very helpful as well. So thank you for that.
Thank you. It's been, it's been a team partnership with the Lamoore PD, so thank you.
Thank you. Debbie Murrow?
Microphone, so we can hear you better. There you go.
Good evening. I'm Debbie Murrow. I'm superintendent of the Lamoore Union High School District, and this is Cheryl Hunt, superintendent of the Lamoore Elementary School District. And on behalf of our districts, we would like to publicly thank the amazing Lamoore Police Department for their quick and thorough actions last Tuesday when they received a 911 call that was an active shooter on our, that there was an active shooter on our Lamoore High School campus, and then at West Hills, Lamoore campus where we have Lamoore Middle College, High School, and University Charter. Their response time and their communication with us, especially through Officers Ward and Officer Stevens, are to be commended. There was a tremendous amount of resources at the scene in the event that they, in the event that they were needed, and just knowing that they were there and available provided us with a lot of comfort during that time. As frightening of an ordeal as it was, we knew that we were in good hands. So I felt the need to come and thank them publicly for all that they do for us on a daily basis, and especially when we feel the most vulnerable in a crisis. Thank you.
Thank you. Amy Ward?
Sensing a theme tonight, my name is Amy. I'm a resident and I'm also a parent of a child who goes to Lamoore Middle College, High School. At 11:50 a.m. on Tuesday, May 8th, I entered my rotary meeting as I do every week, ready to tackle the world, except it was different this time. As I walked in, I immediately spotted several of my fellow Rotarians with concerned looks on their faces, staring intently at their phones. As I approached, I could feel my heart start to race as it was obvious something was wrong. The look on their faces as I asked what was happening said everything that I needed to know. Something was in fact very wrong, and they knew it would affect me. In their best retired law enforcement voices, they'd explained what was happening as they helped me sit down. I could feel my body start to shake. They did their best to try to calm my nerves, but all logic, went straight out that window the moment that I realized LPD was responding to a potential active shooter at my 16-year-old school. I tried to remain calm. I knew that I would be unhelpful and a distraction if I arrived to the campus. So I stayed at my meeting until I received a text from a student saying that someone had been shot. As I raced responsibly to the school, more notifications came about possible victims. Social media is fueled by false information, ridiculous opinions, and a breeding ground for fear. My heart and my mind raced as I arrived and saw hundreds of parents there with the same fears I had. Joe Neve saw me immediately and worked to calm my nerves, and in typical Joe fashion, he did calm my nerves. After all, he believed everything was okay. It must be, because Santa can't lie. I spoke with Fire Chief Bruce German, and he too brought me comfort as he and his team were equally ready to help. But as fear often does, it just kept creeping in. It was relentless, and I was utterly helpless. I began to do the only thing I could do, which was pray. As I prayed, images of our LPD officers started flashing in my mind, so I prayed for them. I called them out by name, Chief Maggie, Mark, Kendall, Kurtz, Cody, Ozzy. But when I got to Ozzy, my mind flashed back to just one week prior. I was invited out to, by Ozzy and Cody to participate in a Milo training seminar with LPD. One of the scenarios that we ran was an active shooter at the school. What impressed me the most during that training was the expertise the officers showed while they explained exactly what they would do in each of the scenarios. In each of the scenarios, I failed, but they did not. And suddenly, I could picture the very names that I called out in the school in that moment. I knew what they were doing because they showed me. Their dedication to their job replayed in my head, and as my confidence in the department rose, the fear decreased. And when I felt fear creeping back in, I fought it with the knowledge that LPD and the rest of the agencies were there to do whatever it took to keep my boys safe. Chief Smith, as you are aware, I have always supported LPD, but for the first time in 15 years as a resident, I was on the other side and I truly needed you. In that hour, you and your team became my piece. The professionalism, the training, the unmatched proactive community involvement, and the expertise of the LPD gave me the only thing that kept me together as a mother, and that was hope. Words can never describe my appreciation for you and your team and all of the helpers that showed up that day. The new Avengers movie has grossed over 1 billion in sales, but I have no need to see it because last week I saw real superheroes doing exactly what they were called to do.
Any other public comment? It's okay. Come on up. Come on up.
My name is Ed Rogers. I live at 951 Tranquility Court, a citizen here of Lamoore. I want to echo all the thoughts I just sat here to listen to. Pretty positive, and I'm going to tell you from my own credibility, I spent 40 years as a full-time professional firefighter in a city north of here. Okay? Don't need to tell you what city, but anyhow, you guys did a hell of a job. Pardon my French, but they did a heck of a job. You couldn't have done that better job if you would have wrote it out for you, scripted it out. It was a heck of a job. And be able to sit back and watch that and watch they did, having been 40 years in that job, and I retired as battalion chief, I was in charge of those kind of incidents. And let me tell you, the reason it went downright is because all the people came together, not because of one, because everybody came together. Now, my second note, I'm not going to leave the fire department out here. I want to especially thank two individuals off this subject, but my grandsons are 13 years old, and they race at the little local Lamoore racetrack out here. Well, on Saturday night, one of them got hurt, and guess who was there to the rescue? Two of your local firefighters. Pardon me, but I don't get, I didn't get their name, but the reason I bring it to you tonight is because not only did they do a heck of a job treating my grandson for what we thought was a broken arm, because of a pretty nasty wreck, took him to Sierra Orthopedic in Fresno today, no broken arm, just real sore muscles. And that's exactly what they said. He's got a real bad sore arm, but it's not broken. And now what even made it even more special, they don't know me, nobody in this room knows me, except for a couple of people in here, they're not firefighters policemen. But what made it special to me is they provided the same kind of service I did as a four-year firefighter. They came to us after the races, when they were turning out the lights, they came by on their car and wanted to know how my grandson was doing. So I don't know who they are, but please pass that on. They did a heck of a job. Thank you.
Thank you. Please come forward.
Good evening. Thank you for the time to speak. My name's Kathy Shafini. I'm managing deputy district attorney at the Kings County DA's office. I've been there for 17 years. I'm here for two reasons. I just wanted to thank the Lamoore Police Department officers. For the past 17 years, I've been working with them, and they have been consistently professional in performing their duties, and I wanted to thank them, and I'm glad they're being recognized tonight. It has always been my privilege and my honor to work with these officers, and I want to thank them for their service and dedication to this community and to Kings County. The second reason I'm here is I wanted to invite the public to the Peace Officer Memorial, which is going to be held tomorrow in the Government Center, 10 a.m. The District Attorney's Office is sponsoring the Peace Officer Memorial. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Hi, my name's Nick Franco. I think the police did a heck of a job in addressing the issue at the college. And what I like about it is they all ran forward, they didn't care what color, what religion you were, they were there to save your life and make sure you were not in harm's way. So I want to thank the police force for what you do and the courage that you all show. Thank you. On that note, I think it's kind of ironic that we had an opportunity to have coffee with a cop, and then there was negativity about, somebody made a comment about, oh, I wouldn't go to that, I've had bad experiences with the cop. I'm sorry that happened to a person, if that's accurate and true. I haven't heard the full story, so I'm a firm believer, you got to get both sides before you react. And then we had the incident at the college. And we have to support our police department, and we have to have a city council that supports the police department. If you have a negative attitude, if you're trying to throw people under the bus from, when they're trying to do their job, I really have to question whether you should be on the council, whether you are mature enough to understand the importance, requirements for your position. And if you did have a bad experience with the police, I think you should try and get help, and I'm sure the city would try and help you, but you can't make accusations without validating them. That ties into the fact that, seems like the mayor, I really didn't want to come to this meeting, but it seems like the mayor, first I hear he's a misogynist with no evidence why, then I hear he doesn't care about the volunteer police department with no evidence why, other than the fact that somebody said, well, he doesn't care about them. Well, you're all a team. You all have to resolve the issues, you have to work together. That's what you're here for. That's what's expected of you. If you want to run your little Facebook page and throw out things that are unsubstantiated as far as I'm concerned, because I don't know the full story to anything, shame on you. You should focus on being a responsible adult on the Lamoore City Council to help this community. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Because he said so. Kristen Crucio, 745 Birch Avenue, and I want the Lamoore City Council to know, we the people are not going away. We're going to stand up for what we feel needs to be done in the city council, whether it's going to be a grand jury complaint or whether it's going to be a recall. If these problems continue, we will take action.
Thank you. Anyone else? No? Okay, I have a letter that someone has asked me to read into the record regarding the incident at West Hills College. I'll try to summarize it. Good evening, Mr. Mayor. Thank you for agreeing to read my letter into the record. I am sure that Lamoore Police Department has received many, many well-deserved thank yous for their genuine care and concern, professionalism, and dedicated service for the events that occurred at West Hills College on May 8th. At approximately 11:52, I received a text message from West Hills College Emergency Alert System as I sat in Kings County Superior Court, completing a court observation for my training to become a CASA advocate. For a brief second, my heart stopped as a mother of a daughter who attends West Hills and a son that attends the Charter School. I was terrified. I honestly cannot recall a time in my life when I have ever felt so much fear. Called my daughter, she answered. She was on her lunch break at Lamoore High School, had not yet left for college classes. Then called my son, he didn't answer. I called again several times, no answer. I called the Charter School office, no answer. I texted my son several times, got no response. I rushed to my car in the court parking lot, but I couldn't drive. I sat there frozen, not knowing what to do. I looked on Facebook to see if anyone had posted anything about what was going on. That was a horrible idea. People were posting very inaccurate information, which only made me feel worse. Then I prayed. I felt a sense of peace coming over me, letting me know that everything was going to be okay. I felt confident, knowing that the Lamoore Police Department was handling the situation. Lamoore PD, a department that most people in larger communities have probably never even heard of because of their small size, but I would put them against any other department any day of the week. Through the leadership of Chief Smith, one of the best chiefs in the business, Lamoore PD is amazing. They are an amazing group of individuals that together make an amazing department. Chief's community-oriented policing approach has proven to be exactly what was needed. I truly believe that the reason there was not chaos and mass confusion is because of professionalism of Lamoore PD and the community's trust in them. Do you know that one day, a Lamoore PD officer pulled over my 17-year-old daughter for not having a front license plate? She was so nervous, she had never been pulled over before. When he asked her for her license, registration, and insurance, she told him she didn't know where her registration and proof of insurance was or what it looked like, but she assumed it would be in the glove box. The officer didn't get frustrated with her and just write her a ticket, like I would have done if I were him. He used it as a teachable moment. He helped her go through her documents and showed her which document was her registration, insurance card was current, and explained why the front license plate is needed. It is little things like this that develop trust and confidence with the community. I just want to say from one scared mother, I am thankful to Lamoore PD, and I could never thank them enough for treating the situation the way they did. I hope that Lamoore never experiences an active shooter situation. I pray that it never happens here. But I am confident LPD and their ability to handle any situation that comes their way. Thank you, Chief Smith, Lamoore PD, and all the agencies that sent their first responders. You guys and gals are truly our hometown heroes. And that's from Marissa Trejo. Thank you. Okay, so at this point, we have a ceremony presentation for recognition of Lamoore Police Department officers by Chief Smith.
Good evening. Thank you for all the kind words that have came from our community members tonight, and I would be remiss if I didn't mention that it was not only the Lamoore Police Department. That day, any public safety officer that was on duty in Kings County raced to the scene to coordinate efforts and work with our Lamoore Police Officers to clear the school. So every, you know, one of the sheriff's deputies, Avonale Police Officers, the Hanford Police Officers, the Kings County probation officers, the Kings County DA investigators, you name it, if they were on duty, they raced to that scene that day. And that's the way we do it in Kings County, and I'm extremely proud of that because that's what makes us special and unique, is that when we have crises, we all come together as one team and we conquer those crises. So I appreciate it, and I can't take any credit for what happened that day. I sat back and listened to that and just prayed for my officers and prayed for everyone on the scene. And I want to make sure that everyone knows that the leadership on scene, Commander Ochoa, Commander Kendall, they handle business. You know, our city is in good hands under their leadership, so I'm extremely proud of my officers. With that, tonight, I'd like to formally recognize every officer, every employee that works for the Lamoore Police Department that has honorably served our country in the armed forces. And about three years ago, we started a medals program, and when I say "we," I was part of the implementation in that. And then, over the past couple of years, I dropped the ball on, you know, the completion of the program. When Commander Kendall got promoted, he took it upon himself to complete the program, like any good leader does. He cleaned up the, you know, the stuff that I left behind, and I commend him for that. I offered him the opportunity tonight to present these awards, and I told him that he's also going to receive an award because he honorably served our country. And the fact that I was going to have him do the presentation, he agreed to come up here upfront to actually receive the award, because I don't think he wanted to take my place. But that's the type of leader he is. He doesn't want any of the glory, he just wants to make sure that his officers are taken care of, and I wanted to make sure everyone knows that's the kind of leader he is, and I truly appreciate that. So can I get all my veterans up here, front and center, please? You guys are going to stand up here in the front. Yeah, that's great. So currently, we have nine members of the Lamoore Police Department who have served our country. Our veterans represent the very best that America has to offer. Not only have they served their country, but now they serve their community, and everyone in our community should be proud that these individuals right here chose the Lamoore Police Department to work for them. Our veteran service is admirable and shouldn't just be recognized on Veterans Day. And I think it's important that we all recognize that the month of May is National Military Appreciation Month. So during the month of May, you need to seek out anyone who's served our country and let them know how much we thank them to enjoy the freedoms that we have to get up here and speak freely. It's because every one of those armed service members that have served before us, many of them sacrificed their lives so we can have free speech. So I just wanted to make sure that everyone's aware of that. So when you see a veteran, please thank them for their service. From now on, you're going to be able to tell that the officers and the people that work in our police department as community service officers are veterans. They'll be able to wear these service pins on their uniforms, indicating to the community members that they have honorably served, and I appreciate your service. So I'm going to go ahead and recognize each one of these individuals for their distinguished service. Commander Mike Kendall, he served in the U.S. Navy from 1999 to 2003. Corporal Matthew Smith served in the U.S. Marine Corps from 2003 to 2007. Corporal Jonathan Giles served in the U.S. Marine Corps from 2006 to 2010. Officer Ryan Obar served in the U.S. Navy from 1999 to 2005. Officer Stephen McPherson served in the Air Force and the National Guard, and he is still a current reservist to this day from 2009 to current. Officer Davy Hall served in the U.S. Coast Guard from 1999 to 2001. Community service officer Ray Freitas served in the U.S. Navy from 1974 to 2004. Community service officer Walter Tucker served in the Navy and the National Guard, the U.S. Navy from 1981 to 1984, and the National Guard from 1984 to 1994. Chaplain Robert Flores served in the U.S. Marine Corps. Robert can join us tonight, but he served from 1975 to 1995, and he actually joined the Lamoore Police Department as a police officer, laddered over to the Kings County Deputy Sheriff's Office, then I was able to steal him back as a chaplain. So I also want to recognize him, even though he couldn't be here tonight. I want to say thank you to all of you for your service. I know your community, your department, your organization, the city supports everything that you do, the community service that you give back to our community in the form of your law enforcement profession is truly admirable. So thank you very much for your service. I'm going to present you the pins. I'm not going to try to put them on you because I don't want to cause anyone to bleed tonight. You guys are lucky, because there's too many of you here tonight, so I won't put anyone on the spot to say a few words. Otherwise, I would. You know me better. So thank you very much. Ladies and gentlemen, please give these guys a round of applause. The next award I'd like to present, I'd like to have Corporal Jonathan Henderson come up front, please. Call him Jonathan, but his name is JP, so please stand up front, JP. So in October of 2017, Corporal Henderson was involved in a police pursuit of a vehicle. At the conclusion of the pursuit, the subject exited the vehicle armed with a large butcher knife. The subject ran away from the officers and ran towards a victim who was standing at the end of a dirt driveway. Corporal Henderson gave chase along with his partners on that evening. Corporal Henderson also has a partner, a canine partner. He sicced the canine on the subject. The canine engaged the subject, but did not have any effect. Corporal Henderson also engaged the suspect with a taser, did not have any effect. The subject was holding a large butcher knife. The subject approached the victim, raised the knife over their head, and at that moment, Corporal Henderson was forced to make a split-second decision that no one in law enforcement wants to make. I tell you that from experience. When you sign up for this job, you don't sign up to use lethal force. It's a, it's a part of the job that no one in this profession ever wants to be faced with. I promise you, so it's nothing that we take lightly. But in this case, Corporal Henderson chose the right decision. He engaged the subject, shot the suspect one time in the torso, and saved the victim's life. We were fortunate to have a very good account of the investigation, along with the video, and it was very apparent that without Corporal and it was very apparent that without Corporal Henderson's decision that night, the victim would not be with us today. So it is my honor and privilege to recognize Corporal JP Henderson with the Lamoore Police Department Life Saving Award, and it can go to a more conscientious individual, can go to a more community service-driven individual that I know. And I want to, I want to say something else about Corporal Henderson. During the call at West Hills College last week, you know, I'm listening to the radio traffic, and someone gets on the air, and this person absolutely was, that was their day off, and this person got on the air and asked if they could respond to the West Hills College incident. So this is a guy who's listening to a scanner, whatever, but he made it a point to get on to make sure that if they needed his help, he would respond there, and that's truly impressive. So it is my pleasure to present Corporal Henderson with this Life Saving Medal, along with the Life Saving Pin that he will be able to wear on his Class A uniform until you retire. So thank you and congratulations.
Okay, at this time, we're going to go ahead and take a five-minute break to have cookies and shake everybody's hand and talk to each other and appreciate, appreciate what we have here in this city, so let's take a break.